All right, the board is back in open session. So at this point, is there any public comment? If there is no public comment, then... Does any board member have any proposed changes to the agenda? If there are none, then we move right into the superintendent's report. Martha?
Yes, and I am excited to welcome Kim Hefner and a team from Hollywood School tonight, students I don't know their names yet, and Mr. Barbaček I know is here, to talk a little bit about some important work going on at Hollywood. So Ms. Hefner, take it away.
Thank you, Board, for inviting us tonight. It's always exciting to get to share with you some of the exciting work that we do in our schools. And this year, I actually spoke with my staff, and I said, "What do we want them to know about?" And it was almost unanimous. They said, "Morning meeting." And so, morning meeting is one element of a classroom structure called responsive classroom. This summer, this past summer, we had four staff members from the district go to be trained in morning meeting, or, I'm sorry, in responsive classroom. I had first heard about responsive classroom from Principal Kazmira Gorman. She was trained in La Grange. And then, one of the things that I had noticed after my first year at Hollywood is that we have one class per grade level. And so, while that's wonderful, it's a beautifully intimate school, we have a phenomenal community, it can create some difficulty when you have some personalities in the class that may not get along well together. And you may have heard about the four Cs of 21st century learning. One of them's collaboration. And in a single section in school, when the kids are together for six years, it can go really well, or it can go really poorly. And so, we've been talking as a school about what we can do to get the kids to collaborate, to build that culture of learning. And I had the opportunity, a year ago, to hire a new second-grade teacher, and I found Ron Barbaček, who is trained in responsive classroom. So he's gonna talk to you a little bit about morning meeting.
As Ms. Hefner said, this is just one aspect of responsive classroom. A lot of it has to do with how teachers use language. The kind of, for better, lack of a better term, discipline in the room is very different. And just this idea of building a respectful environment for children. It's research-based. There's a whole organization behind it, a whole library full of books to help people implement it. And it integrates the teaching of the social skills, emotional skills, and academic skills so that children can be successful, and they're built in throughout the whole day. It's not like, "Well, this is a 40-minute period of social-emotional learning time." There's a lot of interactive modeling that goes on. So there is research that finds that there are significant gains in math and reading scores. Over a three-year period, there was a study over a three-year period, and that gap grew wider over each year. So, back to morning meeting, the purpose of morning meeting. It really sets the tone for the day. You're gonna hear from some of the children about that. We all have a need to feel significant in the classroom, all the children do, and that they belong there, and that they're welcome, and the need to just have fun. And it brings together the social-emotional and intellectual learning. So these are the four components that you're gonna see today, and that you're going to experience, actually. There's a greeting, then a share, then a group activity, and there's a morning message, which the children are gonna find out that adults make mistakes because I left the morning message at school. So I wanna invite the children to come up to introduce themselves, and to tell, to let them tell you why morning meeting helps them. Come on. Just tell them who you are, and say why morning meeting helps you.
I'm Lily, and...
I'm Lily, and greetings help you learn how to say hello in different languages and different ways to greet people.
I'm Avery, and morning meeting helps me because it relaxes me in the morning, and then I'm ready to do my work.
I'm Charlotte, and morning meeting helps me because since we share, we learn about the other kids, since they share things about themselves.
Yeah.
My name is Mitch, and it helps you get in a good mood so you can be friends with everyone.
I am Tim.
It gets you ready for your day by waking up your brain.
Okay, so I'm gonna have you guys come out. We're gonna form a circle, and if we're gonna have the board members come out, we'll form a circle.
Demonstrate your life and training.
Well, this is the way we do it in responsive classroom training. You actually do learn through the ways that you're going to teach, because it is a way of teaching, it's not just a morning. So, we have the greeting.
Greeting is gonna be a pinky shake, and you're gonna say Buenos dias.
So why don't you demonstrate what... So interactive modeling is part of it, so we're gonna have two of them interactive model, the way it should look inside.
Buenos dias. Buenos dias. And then, you're gonna go to the middle of the circle, greet two people, and go back to your spot.
Buenos dias.
Buenos dias.
Buenos dias.
Buenos dias.
Buenos dias.
So that's a pretty quick greeting. Sometimes they can be a little longer.
And now, the sharing.
Um, Charlotte, you tell something about yourself that you want them to know. Then you take three times questions about your share. And Charlotte is going to demonstrate her share. This is my... I don't know. What's your president's name? Why?
Any board members? Do you have a question, Rachel? Can you answer?
What do you like to do with your homework?
Uh, how long are they gonna stay at your house?
The activity is called... Don't you forget it. This activity practices the skills of listening, speaking, and reading.
So they're an interactive model first, and then...
Okay. Our name is Joe. Okay. My name is Joseph. My name is Joe. His name is Joseph, and my name is Bob.
So what you're doing is they're coming up with a silly name, and then you have to remember the person that you just got it from, and pass it on to the next person and tell it you're... Okay, so who are you gonna have to start?
Charlotte.
My name is Baba. My name is... I don't know.
His name is Ira, and my name is Ma. Her name is Ma, and my name is Hot Dog Head.
Her name is Hot Dog Head, and my name is Zuzu.
Her name is Zuzu, and my name is Chewy.
So there's, that's an activity that we do. There's several, there's a whole book of activities that you can do in the morning. Again, to have fun, to loosen up. Morning message is the thing I forgot. The usual morning message posted, you would have it posted, and Mitch would have read it, and sorry, Mitch.
Do you remember it?
Do you remember those morning messages?
I do. I do. Oh.
I should have.
I should have.
I should have, but I didn't.
Can you just write it on there, for?
Well, at least, yes, it's...
Can I do it?
Yeah, go ahead.
It's like, "Good evening, board members." We're gonna teach you about morning meeting today, and we will be introducing the morning meeting and how you do it.
Very good.
Yeah, you gotta read it.
The message lets you know what's going on today, it teaches you new things, and asks you to think about something.
A lot of times, we use the morning message. We embed a lesson that might be about nouns or adjectives, something like that, but also use it. So that's morning meeting, and we do it every morning. It's a great way to start the day. That's great. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure, make sure you return the word.
That was our first interactive experience.
Yeah.
Real live immersion here.
21st century.
You should've done that at our retreat.
We can start our meetings.
All right, so I should, so thank you so much, Hollywood students, and Mr. Barbaček, and Ms. Hefner, and the parents that joined us. And feel free, I know there might be, you know, homework, or early bedtimes, or things that need to happen at your houses, so you're welcome to stay for the meeting, but don't feel obligated. I'll continue with the superintendent's report. The other thing I just really wanted to talk about was the start of the year, and I think the board is fully aware. We made a lot of shifts and changes. We opened the two new classrooms at Central. We had shifted the multipurpose room into two classrooms over at Ames, which had a significant increase, or change, I should say, in our lunch procedures, which also then relocated our music and art. We moved our early learners to Blithe. Hollywood is now hosting a Lads ECD program. And so there were a lot of shifts in just kind of the building use, not to mention the students that are in the buildings. And I really just wanted to take this opportunity to thank the board for supporting those kinds of shifts and changes, thanking our principals and teachers who did a lot to sort of create changes in a relatively short period of time, and thank our students for really being so flexible with all of it. I think it was really creative problem-solving at its, at perhaps its best, and I know the board's into, "How's it going?", you know? And it is, it is going okay, it really is, it's going fine. And I think that's, I said the other day, is that good news or bad news? I feel like we have now seeped into just a few more of our nooks and crannies, which I think is great news, and it's kind of a perfect segue to the facilities survey, which actually is the next item on the superintendent's report that really speaks around our facilities. And I think, as good as it's, as it is, I think it has perhaps contributed to that sense that our buildings do feel well, well utilized, and, you know, somewhat tight in terms of space, and that we're hearing some of that. So the next item is this facilities survey that we asked the community to respond to three questions. The community meaning our parents and guardians. We really just sent it just to people that are involved with District 96 specifically. But, "Do they feel the current buildings and design, appearance, and functionality contribute positively your child's educational experience? Do you feel the school facilities are true outreach of the community? And what do you believe is the most important facilities issue for our school buildings that needs to be addressed?" We had almost 150 responses. The survey is still open, so if people are listening or want to still participate, the link is still open, and I can even resend that. But even our architects said, "I'm not ever, I'm not sure I've ever seen a survey so well responded to." I mean, it's certainly not everybody, but as surveys go, and online surveys go, I think it's a very good response rate. The board has the detailed, the details of all the responses. We did not release those publicly because we didn't tell parents or families that we would be. So I'm sharing it with our board, it'll be sharing it with our facilities advisory committee, and boards had some time to digest it. I don't think you're seeing or hearing things that are probably new. I think you're seeing and hearing kind of an affirmation or confirmation of some of the same ideas that we discussed even at just last month's meeting around a need for space, a desire to enhance outdoor learning spaces, how can we sort of balance the outdoor safety and play and traffic and parking, taking a look at the buildings, a desire certainly to look at Ames somewhat quickly because there feels like that option, given that we now have the property next to it. And there were a lot of other, perhaps more sort of singular items, but I think it was really good information. I think it really feels like the community has really contributed to the information and informing of the board and of the facilities advisory committee as we plan to move forward. So I want to thank people for participating in the survey, and thank the board for reading lots and lots of comments. And I don't know if people had other questions, other comments they wanted to share about it?
I think the survey was fantastic, Martha, just for the reasons you said. It's not necessarily new information, but it's important to substantiate what we're, what our understanding is. So I think it was really helpful.
I know you said, oh, sorry. I know you said this, how many, you said, how many responses?
147 when I counted just today. I think there might be like one or two duplicates, so...
Do you know what it was at this, at the time these were?
It was 147 today, and it, I think we had about 30 or 60 within like the first...
No, I'm talking when you...
Oh, it was probably about there. It was probably about 140.
About 140, okay.
Yeah, yeah. So I think there's a few new ones since.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, being on the facilities planning committee, I read through these very closely, and was actually pretty, I felt pretty comfortable that everything that people are saying, we have been discussing. So it wasn't, I mean, there was some great, you know, some new ideas and some things to bring, but it definitely was like an affirmation of, okay, I think we're, we're all feeling the same thing generally as a community, and so that was really helpful. And I look forward to being able to engage the community further, moving on, which I know is going to be happening in person.
Right, right, right. And I have that, actually, I can sort of link back to that agenda item, but right now, I've set October 16th as an evening that looks good on the district calendar, where I would work directly with our architect to do an informational meeting, both to kind of gather input and to share where we are in the process with the community at large. So that was, we'd wanna do the survey, we'd wanna do a community engagement night, and then reconvene the facilities advisory committee.
I think that being said, there's, there is, in the responses, there's a pretty big diversity in what people see as valuable things and issues to be addressed. Some people think that perhaps something should be picking on Central School, that it's too maze-like. Other people finds that to be endearing.
Right.
So I, I think the issues we saw are consistent with what we've seen before, but I don't think there's a grand push for any specific solution.
Yeah, in terms of specific solution, yeah, I agree.
Any other questions? So thanks, Martha.
I just urge people to come to the meeting, that we really do wanna hear.
And I will, I will resend the link to...
Yeah, I don't know if we can get people to, you know, once that, recirculate the link, or once the announcement goes out about the meeting, to make sure it's publicized, because we really do wanna make sure that we are, I mean, this is a big deal, so we wanna make sure we're...
So you have to notice that as a board meeting, right? Is that right?
No, because I think it would be, it's a, unless the board wanted to be, I mean, the board could attend, but not, you're not presenting, that it would really, the way I vision it is, it's Carrie Matlock and I.
Okay.
Is that any information?
There was one comment that if there's a way to publish it, to allow the larger community, I think that would be good, whether it be done through...
Good news flash.
Through Bob or the landmark, since that's our, is our local area.
We got a hot lead for you, Bob.
October 16th, 6:30. And I thought we'd send it to the public libraries, so I'm continuing, I'm continually open, you know, Margie and Harvey, to how do we get information out to the larger community? So right beyond our parents and guardians.
Right, yes. Because, I mean, we may have parents who were here whose children just graduated, yet they don't know that this is available, or future kindergarteners.
Yep.
So, yeah, I'd like to thank you for getting that survey out in really short order. I think it's less than a month, basically, right? You had to ask for it a month ago, and got it out, and got the responses, and echoing the other board members, I think it's really important to engage the community on these questions in a continuous way, so I think that's great. And also, congratulations to you and your staff for getting the school year off to a good start as well, so that's also very encouraging.
Thank you.
Next item is the consent agenda. So at this point, if the board secretary could read the consent agenda?
Yes. Today's consent agenda includes minutes from four meetings, those of August 15th, August 16th, again on August 16th, and September 6th. The personnel report, the payables pre-list of August 31st, September 5th, and September The press, various board policy that are undergoing review. Those include a memo from press, a, and then some policies as well, which include uniform grievances, closed meeting minutes, instructional materials, orders to forego life-sustaining treatment, and accommodating individuals with disabilities. And then there are also additional items, excuse me, organizational board of educational meeting, resource conservation, homework, achievements and awards, release time for religious instruction and observance, and student appearance. Then we have the administrator and teacher salary and benefits report for the school year 2017, and a resolution regarding disposal of some access district property.
Thanks, Joe. There's one item on the personnel report that we are, that we discussed in closed session, that we are pulling from this consent agenda. Other than that, are there any other items on the consent agenda that any board member would like taken off for further discussion? If there...
Quick clarification, and this may be just my bad memory. In the class size waivers, families are kept together at schools. Is it no more, it's one and a half miles or a mile?
One and a half.
Okay. Then I have no...
Okay.
I actually have one question regarding the student appearance. I was looking at the...
Should we pull that off then, and vote?
If there's a substantive question, we can just pull it off. So do you want us to pull that off, then? We, we talk about it...
No, I had a question about it too, so let's pull it off.
So we'll pull off the item...
7160.
Yeah, student appearance. Any other items that people would like to discuss in more detail? If not, then we'll be voting on the consent agenda with the one personnel item taken off, and the policy on student appearance taken off. So with that said, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with those two changes?
Smooth.
Second.
Okay. Margie, you call it all, please.
Mr. Barsati?
Hi.
Ms. Kleiber?
Hi.
Mr. Hunt?
Hi.
Ms. Murphy?
Hi.
Mr. Regan?
Hi.
Mr. Marhol?
Hi.
Mr. Miller?
Hi.
Motion carried.
Thanks, Margie. So, policy 7160, student appearance, some board members had some questions about that.
Go ahead, David.
Yeah, no, I was looking at what's the expectations for student appearance, and then I was looking what's with in the handbook, and it doesn't seem to mimic the two that you don't...
Right, there's, what's the intent of the expectations versus the handbook?
So the handbook version, let me just make sure, the handbook, there's the old version of what was in the handbook, and then there's a proposal for an updated version.
So that's the new...
So this is the new one?
That's what I suspected, but I wasn't sure if we were... Because I agree, the titles are not as clear. Let me just make sure.
So expectations seem to like your updated one.
Yes, expectations is definitely the updated one.
Yeah, because I was gonna say, the other one I thought was a little...
Appreciate the changes.
Yes, so the board does not have to officially vote on the parent-student handbook. I just really wanted to leave it there as a piece of information for you. You approved the policy, and then, but I wanted you to have that information. And that was really our conversation last month, was that we would sort of update the language by design, looked at some gender-neutral statements, and this was, this was good. Our district leadership team, I think it's good. Our district leadership team looked at it, and I think it's more...
I like this.
Yeah, I definitely appreciate it. It's good.
Yeah, I think we could be, I think the principals drive it, just making sure we're understanding that, you know, sometimes you're wearing it, is it one and a half inch strap? Is it a whatever strap? We're really, why are we nitpicking about that? It isn't important to their learning.
Yeah, yeah.
So, when will this, this section be updated?
So we will, we will replace it in the parent handbook. You know, the parent handbook really, I mean, it sits online, it's kind of a static document. I think we'll just replace it. The time when parents say they have read and approved the handbook, you know, other idea, and we can discuss it, leadership team, is that we would send it out. It's just an updated piece of information for the school year. We're still so early in the school year that I would, I would recommend that.
Yeah, I think that's great. So just to make clear, we are not voting on this, we are just voting on the five-year review of the policy, which is like...
We have no line policy, yes.
Which is not, there was no substantive changes to the actual policy, because the policy just directs us to the handbook.
Yes.
Just make sure we know.
And thanks to the leadership team, or whoever was, you know, working on that, because it's, yeah, it's better.
Particularly in middle schools, we knew that that's really where probably the, most of the conversation or questions come from.
Yeah.
Yeah, just a good respectful conversation about how we engage our students, and is it really an issue?
We looked at samples from other school districts, they talked to teachers, and gathered input, and...
Definitely, you read the policy, and it doesn't, it definitely feels gender neutral as opposed to...
Yes, right. I think that's the goal.
The other ones did not feel...
Yes, right.
Thank you for that feedback.
Any further comments? If not, is there a motion to approve the five-year policy review for the policy 7160 student appearance?
Second.
Margie, you call it all, please.
Mr. Marhol?
Hi.
Ms. Kleiber?
Hi.
Mr. Regan?
Hi.
Mr. Barsati?
Hi.
Ms. Murphy?
Hi.
Mr. Hunt?
Hi.
Mr. Miller?
Hi.
Motion carried.
Thanks, Margie. Next up, we have the Riverside Educational Council. Do we have any comments from the, no comments, from the Riverside Educational Council? Next, our board member comments. Are there any comments from the finance committee, Rich?
No, I, Martha and Rob and I have been, have had a couple of opportunities to meet, and we're gonna make those regular, perhaps even weekly, so I'm really excited about that. But nothing, nothing beyond that to report.
Thanks, Rich. Carrie, do you have any comments from the education committee?
Yeah, last month, Merrill, Ms. Brownlow, provided a really, I think, great update of our summer professional development for our teachers, and they are busy, whether they are paid or not, they're amazing people, so I just wanna thank them again. And I also wanna thank Merrill, because she really thinks carefully whether it's Institute Day or not, what she is having this teacher strain on, so it's not a waste of their time that's meaningful. So I wanna thank her for listening and collaborating with them, so. And then she gave a talk on a new piece that we're doing called Facing History in Ourselves that integrates history, literature, and human behavior that's gonna be kind of threaded through different ways. So there, there's more to come from that. And then yesterday, the advanced learning committee met all day. They're extremely dedicated.
replace it, the time when parents say they have read and approved the handbook, you know, other idea, and we can discuss it, leadership team, is that we would send it out, it's just an updated piece of information for the school year, we're still so early in the school year that I would, I would recommend that.
Yeah, I think that's great. So just to make clear, we are not voting on this, we are just voting on the five-year review of the policy, which is like.
We have no line policy, yes.
Which is not, there was no substantive changes to the actual policy, because the policy just directs us to the handbook.
Yes.
Just make sure.
And thanks to the leadership team or whoever was, you know, working on that, because it's, yeah, it's better.
Particularly in middle schools, we knew that that's really where probably the, most of the conversation or questions come up.
Yeah, just a good respectful conversation about how we engage our students and is it really an issue?
We looked at samples from other school districts, they talked to teachers, and gathered input and.
Definitely, you read the policy and it doesn't, it definitely feels gender neutral as opposed to.
Yes.
Yes.
Right, I think that's the goal.
Yes.
Right. Good to hear that.
Any further comments? If not, is there a motion to approve the five-year policy review for the policy 7160 student appearance?
So moved.
Second.
Margie, you call it all, please.
Mr. Marhol?
Hi.
Ms. Kleiber?
Hi.
Mr. Regan?
Hi.
Mr. Barzati?
Hi.
Ms. Murphy?
Hi.
Mr. Hunt?
Hi.
Mr. Miller?
Hi.
Motion carried.
Thanks, Margie. Next up, we have the Riverside Educational Council, do we have any comments from the, no comments, from the Riverside Educational Council? Next, our board member comments. Are there any comments from the Finance Committee, Rich?
No, I, Martha and Rob and I have been, have had a couple of opportunities to meet, and we're going to make those regular, perhaps even weekly, so I'm really excited about that. But nothing, nothing beyond that to report.
Thanks, Rich. Sherry, do you have any comments from the Education Committee?
Yeah, last month, Merrill, Ms. Brownlow, provided a really, I think, great update of our summer professional development for our teachers, and they are busy, whether they are paid or not, they're amazing people, so I just want to thank them again, and I also want to thank Merrill, because she really thinks carefully whether it's Institute Day or not, what she is having this teacher strain on, so it's not a waste of their time, it's meaningful, so I want to thank her for listening and collaborating with them, so. And then she gave a talk on a new piece that we're doing called Facing History in Ourselves that integrates history, literature, and human behavior that's going to be kind of threaded through different ways, so there, there's more to come from that. And then yesterday, the Advanced Learning Committee met all day, they're extremely dedicated, this has been a very thoughtful discussion, it's not easy, there are a lot of complicated things to think about and how we address those needs, but there'll be more to come from that, and we're working now on kind of narrowing down the focus, so making progress, so that's all.
Great, thanks, Sherry. And then, Policy Committee, Dan, do you have any comments about the Policy Committee?
Well, after approving the policies tonight, I will go into hibernation until we get the next.
He wants to say that again. Not fun.
All right, with that, thanks.
Is this something where we can just regular, just general comments?
Oh, yes, sorry, as we.
No, it's okay, I just wanted to say that I, along with Jeff, attended the first day of school, the first teacher institute on the way back, and the first morning, all the teachers were back in, and it was a, it was a really inspiring hour, and you can feel the excitement in the room, and I'm just, you know, I've gone two years now, and every time I go, I'm just so glad I've gone, because you, just the excitement of the school year and the message, and, I mean, you guys were all on social media, and, you know, doing all that kind of stuff, so it was, it was just, it was a really great kickoff, so thank you guys for doing that and inviting us, so.
Thanks for joining us.
Yeah.
Do any other board members have any comments about anything they've participated in, in schools, if you'd like to share?
Well, to kind of echo Linda's comments, at the Hauser Open House, there's, there's a level of excitement, I mean, the teachers are motivated and excited to bring on a new year, and that's always fun to see. And then I also went to Hollywood, and same thing in their kindergarten classroom, there's a new teacher, she's excited to be there, she's ready to try some new things and pull in from what she knew from before, so.
She has a hot pink rug.
Any other comments?
I guess I'll just add, I had a sixth grader this year, and lived through it a few times now, I don't know if it's just my experience, or it felt like a smooth transition this year, it really, I think they, being able to have some consistency amongst administrators there has been, was very helpful, and it was a very smooth night, and my experience so far has been very smooth, the transition, but they, Avram Christie did a great job with that.
Great.
All right, we next move on to old business, and the first item in old business is the presentation of the 2017-2018 legal budget and the adoption of resolution, so I'm going to read the motion, and then we will have just board discussion. So at this point, is there a motion to approve the 2017-2018 legal budget and adoption of the resolution as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All right, so then, at this point, I'll open the floor for board discussion about the budget, I don't know if, Mr. Holmes, if you'd like to maybe give us an overview of the budget?
Sure.
If I need to do that.
In your papers, you had the summary page, summary booklet, and then there was a budget enhancements increases, a budget changes log from the last budget presentation, September 6th, then there was a budget detail report, and then there was a memo regarding the $3.5 million transfer, and the state budget form, and then the legal notice in the paper posting the budget. So I'm mostly going to talk about the first form. Some budget highlights are that the operating funds, which are the Ed Fund, Tort Immunity, Operations and Maintenance, Transportation, IMF, Social Security, and Working Cash are used for the day-to-day operations of the district, and then the Capital Projects, Life Safety and Debt Service Fund are for non-operating fund, operating for the district, such as construction projects, life safety projects, and bond payments. The changes since the last budget presentation are the addition of two teachers at Central School, additional equipment at Hollywood School, and the reduction of corporate personal property replacement taxes. These led to a reduction of the annual surplus in the operating funds of $220,515, which reduced it, which reduced the operating fund, the operating funds surplus of $571,945 at the last meeting to $351,430. The biggest, the biggest source of revenue for the district's operating funds is property taxes, which was on page two, and the biggest expenditures are salaries, which was on page three. A question can be asked then, what is the trend in revenue, since 87% of operating revenue is from local property taxes, and the CPI has been used to cap the property taxes the last two years at 0.8% and 0.7% respectively. Luckily, the CPI this coming levy will be 2.1. So hopefully, revenue should be going up better than they were before. The same question can be asked for, what about the trend in expenditures? Since 80% of operating expenditures come from salaries and benefits, the rate of expenditures has gone up with the bargain salaries. A further question can be asked about, if the district keeps increasing expenses exponentially, say at 3% more than revenues, how long would it take to spend the entire fund, the entire surplus in all funds of $35 million? The answer is about 10 years at 3%, if you, if you went up 3% each year. However, there are some, few items to point out, that even with the addition of the two sections at Central, total salary and benefit increases was offset by teachers leaving the district. It was actually about a $7,000 decrease. Please also know that the teachers, that four teachers and one paraprofessional put in retirement for the end of this year. As far supplies goes, I have a couple of nice anecdotes I'd like to talk about. The first is regarding paper. The district reached out to several companies, more than usual, and we got quotes for paper, and the district will save $1,200 or 6.9%. The second regards to the pods at Ames, there are cafeteria tables that wouldn't fit into the, into the gym, and they were going to be moved out to pods. So I walked over there with Todd, and Ray, and Bill, and we looked around, and it was determined that perhaps we could move the teacher, the gym teacher, from his office to the custodian's office, which looked like a good idea, so we can put the, so we can put the tables into his old office, and the custodian moved into another small, small location. So, and with that being said, we saved about $190 per month, but also you don't have to take the tables out into the hallway, through into outside, into a pod. The big non-operating fund expenditures are for bond payments and capital improvements. The district is obligated to pay $1.15 million per year approximately through the year 2022. Since buildings are older and improvements are required in order to provide the best possible learning environments for the students, the district is currently working with an architect to create long-range improvement plan, long-range capital improvement plan. And also, I'd like to point out that Merrill has pointed out to me that, with the ELA curriculum improvement or adoption, that starting next year, she's, she anticipates she will reduce supplies by $200,000 and purchase service by $90,000 for a total of $290,000. So even though things are going up higher, we're finding ways to find savings here and there, and we're working constantly to find better ways to improve purchasing, work on ways to save expenses, find better ways, and we'll, I'll continue to work with the principals and the executive committee to find ways, and I really need to learn from them and get a feel for the district, the culture, and work with them, kind of like you did with the community, just to find out so that we can make some good improvements without reducing any quality services, because we're all here for the students. So that's my report, does anyone have any questions?
Thank you, Rob. I'd like to just make a couple of points before we dive in with a bunch of questions here. To begin with, the format that, that Rob shared with us should be familiar to everybody, because that was David Sellers' format. Going forward, Rob is going to provide all the supporting documents in their entirety that you guys are used to seeing from David, so the comparatives, everything that sort of helps us, you know, digest these pieces and make these decisions. You know, what Mr. Sellers talked about in the couple of years that we had him here is having a zero-based budget, and that's something that, you know, Martha and I, or Rob, and are going to be talking about. Of course, the budget's going to hold a number in there, but what I personally advocate is having someone in Rob's position who asks the questions, just, just as he described here, where he looks at something like purchase services, purchasing paper, and we bid that out actively, and we make sure that we're getting the right, the right expenses and not just renewing agreements. So that's, that's what I'm looking for, and that's, that's what Rob and Martha and I are talking about as we go forward here. When you talk about purchase services and supplies and materials this year, we sort of know what's behind those big jumps, but, but from my perspective, I want us to look deeper in those categories and see, and see beyond curriculum expenses that, what we have this year, we know those, those big expenses, but what else are we spending money on in those categories, and do we have to this year when we're seeing such big jumps in those categories? That's the question that we're not necessarily going to be answering tonight, but that's the question that Rob's going to help us answer as we go through this budget year. That's all I wanted to add.
Yeah, no, that's, that's. I appreciate your comments about the growth in the revenues being very slow because inflation and the growth of the expenditures, I mean, one of the things that strikes me about our budget trajectory is that, at least over the last three years, including this year, this year, last year, and the year before last, we're averaging higher than, I mean, about, it's about 20% in aggregate in those three years. In fact, the revenues, because, because of inflation, is totally flat, and that has materially changed our, our fiscal position. If you go back to just, just two years ago, three years ago, we were running surpluses of over $3 million a year, every, every single year, we're running surpluses of that magnitude. The year that just finished, we went down to about $2 million, and you were talking, now, we're talking about $350,000, so we're very close to being basically break even between revenues and expenses, and that happened in a period of just a couple of years. So, to me, if this current trend continues even one more year, I mean, you're right, we have some retirements coming up, and we have more, higher rate of inflation, so we should get more revenue coming in, but to me, it's pretty clear that if it continues even for one more year, we're going to be deficit spending, possibly two. So I'm very concerned about that, especially in light of the fact that our enrollment is totally flat. If you look at the number of students K through eight in the 2014-15 year, it's exactly the same as it is today, it's like 1,630, within one student, basically, if you look at the same date, the same year, the same time. So our costs are growing very rapidly per students and very rapidly inflation-adjusted as a real cost per, per student in real dollars, so I'm very concerned about the trajectory we're on. The reason I'm concerned about it is that if we spend too much now and get ourselves into a situation where we are deficit spending, and this, this, all of this is not assuming anything about new additions to our properties, if we want to build something new, and things of that, none of this is in here. And that, that, I do have some concerns about that trajectory, so, I don't know, other board members?
If I may add to that, Jeff, I think that's really an important point to make, and I, I know how I feel about it, I know how Jeff feels about it, I don't know how the rest of the board feels about it, so I think this is a good opportunity, if you have a strong opinion about it, whether you agree or disagree, to share it with, with the board here.
No, I, I agree with you, I think some of the changes were made, were necessary, we didn't have necessarily the infrastructure of staff that we needed, but I think it's time that we need to really consider where we place people and when and how, because that staffing is vital, but it's extremely expensive, and we need to think about class sizes, all of those things come into that conversation, but also to support people, I think that's what's going to be a large conversation. So I definitely agree with your sentiment, I don't want us to have years where, yes, we're doing what's right for these kids, but what about the kids in five years? So I want to make sure we're doing well for them as well, so.
I'm probably a little bit of a different perspective, because I, I completely see what you're saying and, and agree, but I, I also don't feel comfortable with taxpayer money. Some of the surpluses in the past, I thought were a bit excessive for, for a public body to continually get, so for me, ideally, we would be taking in what we spend. So while I know that gets us to the point where we might be deficit spending in some years, I, I would hold that I'm not, I'm not that comfortable with the idea of continuing with a huge surplus either. I do think, well, I do think, yes, we have to plan ahead and make sure that in five, 10 years, there's money for those students as well, but I also think we need to make sure that we're using the money for when students are actually here as well. So I, for me, I have just a little bit of a concern of running a surplus every year, every year.
Your point was well taken, I should clarify my comment, my comment was not to say, I think it's terrible that we're not collecting.
No, I, I know you're not, I know that.
My point was, is the extreme rapidness, extreme rapidity.
Agreed, right.
In which we have gone from a very strong position to a position where we're now kind of breaking even, and if we continue on the current course.
To spend it, yes.
We will be running huge deficits very shortly, and that's my concern.
And I'm not one who would like to propose a referendum, I don't.
And I think you're, you're right about that.
Absolutely not, and I, I'm not disagreeing on those aspects in any way.
And that's my only point.
I'm just saying, I want, I, you know, I just want that to be said, I mean, obviously, it's, you know, it's not a perfect world, you're not going to always spend what you take in, and it's going to break even, you know, I get that, but I don't want to end up with a $3 million surplus every year.
No, that's, that's not my point per se, it was more that things are changing very rapidly.
Yeah, agreed.
Very rapidly, and it's not because of inflation, it's not because of student enrollment growth, it's pure increase in spending, some of which is necessary, some of which we know we made investments that are necessary and good, and hopefully this will be good for kids, but I don't see how we can continue at this rate, that's all I'm saying.
I agree.
If other people have any, Joel or Hannah or David?
I'm sort of of a similar mindset, I mean, I don't necessarily think deficit spending is bad, I mean, I mean, I'm sure, I mean, depending on what you've got going on, the trajectory is what's concerning, though I'm not completely alarmed yet, because, I mean, we did make some significant, there were some significant changes made in the last couple, like, couple of years, which caused us to increase spending. That being said, I'm not raising the alarm bells yet, I think if we ran a deficit spending, I'm assuming it's like reasonable, I mean, we're not, I'm not too concerned for like next year or the year after now, if we see like the type of shift that we saw from, like going from $3 million down to like $350,000 in the last four years, then that's, that, we see that type of jump in like two years, then yeah, it's a concern, but we need to, we need to keep an eye on it, I'm not, but I'm not necessarily worried about deficit spending, because sort of, sort of to Linda's point, it's, it's, we don't, we, we're stewards of taxpayer money, and yeah, sometimes we're going to be running huge deficits, sometimes we might be running huge surpluses, so that's sort of where I'm coming from.
I think something I'd like to add to, though, is I would like our facilities, whether it's playgrounds or anything else, to be thoughtful and meaningful, and to make sure that's not. that that's not going to be $0. And I want to make sure that we reserve appropriate funds to really do what our community asked us to do, which is to upgrade what we need to do and to make spaces at work for the type of teaching that we're doing right now. So that's my other part of the picture is kind of saving for when because we know what's happening, we know what we're doing, we're planning for it. Let's make sure we're ready.
To Sherry's point, we've got some expenses on the horizon.
Yes.
The facilities committee is still doing its work. We don't know what that stuff is going to cost yet. We haven't even, this board hasn't even talked about how we're going to pay for that yet. Are we going to take it out of reserves? Are we going to get low interest loan? Are we going to get, you know, tax exempt bonds? We have no idea yet because we don't know what the scope of the project is yet. And for me, when you have those unknowns, you preserve the reserves as best as you can.
That's how I feel.
Right? And that's, that's my perspective.
No, and it's been said, but I definitely share the concerns of the rapid decline and seeing going from $3 million, although I would also agree that $3 million surplus is not necessarily a great place to be.
Right.
But at the same time, if you're looking at an overall performance, if we're at $3 million one year, two years later, we find ourselves at $300,000. That's a very, very poor trend.
I think one thing that may help us to focus on what needs to be spent is our purpose is to provide a good education for our kids. To do that, we need good staff and facilities that are appropriate. But facilities that are appropriate doesn't mean something that's too grand. I mean, we know what our issues are in terms of space at, say, Ames, and we know what some of the inequities are, but I think we can be creative within the space we have. Rob just talked about moving people around a little bit where those aren't, the custodian is a necessary function, but he doesn't necessarily need to have that office. And more of a, to summarize, I think, a focus on what our end goals are. And just to say it's for the kids isn't really an excuse to overspend or have too many grand ideas.
Any further comments about the budget or the budget trajectory or anything related to our budget discussion?
I only have one, and it's only because I mention this budget plan probably every meeting. You're probably tired of hearing of it, but I wasn't on the finance portion of that committee, but I remember a part of our agreement as a group was that we would align our budget to our strategic plan and to make sure, and I know our administrators have done a great job, like Merrill, checking to see what our curriculum needs are and that we're adopting new curriculum when we need it and that the expenses match what's happening and when we need it. So just a reminder for that, and I think that is happening and I'd like to keep that going because that's what we promised to do.
Well, we still have Rob standing at the mic here. Do any board members have questions about the transfer between funds, that item that's on the agenda there? It's something that we've done before, but I just thought it was important that it's brought up to make sure everybody understands what we're doing. Great.
Thanks, Rob.
Thank you.
So if there are no further comments, are we ready to vote on the budget then? All right, so we already called the motion. So Margie, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Regan?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mr. Barzadi?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Ms. Kleiber?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thanks, Margie. We next move on to the demographic study. At this point, is there a motion for the board to approve the demographic study for District 96 as presented?
Still moved.
Martha, would you like to remind us what the, what you've done? You've talked to certain demographers and maybe just summarize your conclusions on that?
So I talked to several different demographers. We talked at last month's meeting about looking at some other options. So Casarda is the demographer that had done the work in 2015, had reached out to him and then reached out to some alternative options. And just in researching those, some of them are geographically not close and therefore are more expensive to pursue those. Some of the services that other area districts had used, I've learned that another service in the local area had recently stopped being available. The person was no longer with the company and was kind of their sole demographer. So the more I really dug in, looked at previous reports, I'd reached out to another demographer that had done our work back around, I think, 2011 and prior to that. It was really my recommendation that John Casarda has the recent information, has a good price point rule honestly, and seems ready, willing, able to do this work for us also in a timely and efficient way.
Does anyone have any comments about this topic?
I want to thank Martha for doing the research on it. And specific to that proposal that Casarda sent over, you know, as I read it here, that $6,900 to do the study, but $2,100 additional to get him to come here and answer questions on it. I don't think we need to do that travel. I think he can, you know, do a spruce up and just send it to us.
I would complete agree with that.
Okay, good.
It was mentioned that he'd do a phone conversation for free.
Yes.
Great.
Was it mentioned though, the last time we were, since we worked with him or he had done this study fairly recently, we were going to ask if there was any way to reduce the fees as a result of that?
Right. We did reach out and ask that and suggest that idea. And it's really his fee. He said, even though it looks like it's just a redo, it's an examination of some new data and digging into that data, he knows it's time intensive enough that this, he's not willing to negotiate that as a, it's really a service price. But we did ask.
Okay.
And one of the things that I had mentioned to Martha is that he needs to focus on not so much births within the local area, but housing turnover and new families with kids moving in where someone might be downsizing because that seems to be true. Our housing stock is not increasing appreciably in any fashion. So it's the families moving in or having children while they're in the district that that's really what his focus needs to do.
I think that's a very good point. I think I remember reading in this last study that the birth rate has been the same for a long time. I think he's been using the same birth rate for 30 years or something like that. So you're right, it's the change of housing stock turnover that...
I didn't necessarily come up with that observation, but I think that is important as we move forward and looking at what the additional, if any, is going to be.
As I said last time, I'm not that optimistic that we're going to get any great new information here, but I think given that we may be adding, you know, we may be considering adding addition, I think it's worth doing. Any other comments about this?
No, I agree with that. I'd rather be prepared and just in case, especially with the new additions, so.
So if there are no other comments, then Margie, please call the roll.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Barzadi?
Aye.
Mr. Regan?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Ms. Kleiber?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thanks, Margie. Next item is the memorandum of understanding with the Village of Riverside. At this point, is there a motion for the board to approve the memorandum of understanding with the Village of Riverside as presented?
Still moved.
I know there were some questions last time. I think Dave had several questions about that, and I know there were some back and forth and revisions of the document. So I don't know, maybe if Martha can update us on the changes and Dave, maybe you can give us your perspective on the changes as well.
Sure. So just to be clear, so the school code talks about a recommendation to work, you know, have a written cooperative agreement like this with your local police department. And it is, it is not a formal requirement. It's a recommendation. It is considered absolutely probably best practice and a good idea. And talking to attorneys, she would say that probably most all Illinois school districts have this kind of agreement. We did talk, and this was our goal from the beginning, is to make this agreement very appropriate to a K-8 school district, that this is different than the agreement that the police department, same to police department, might have with our local high school district. We did work with some of David's input to kind of soften the language as much as we felt appropriate, but also didn't want to take away the sort of core of the plan. So there are some revisions to it since the last time you looked at it. You actually, as a board, have the edited version and then you have the recommended final version. But it really is this affirmative written agreement with, right now, the proposal is to do this with Riverside, but we then would move forward once it was approved to work with North Riverside and Brookfield in the same, really look at presenting a very similar plan to them. But to have a good collaborative relationship with the Riverside Police Department is absolutely our goal. And I do, I think it's important, it's, you know, is it necessary to have the written agreement perhaps to the finest letter of the law? It is not absolutely necessary, but I think it shows, again, that very affirmative approach that this is indeed our goal. So I appreciate the input. I appreciate a lot of thoughtful discussion around this. I know this is not something that anybody takes lightly. I just want to assure people that preserving student confidentiality, preserving student safety, preserving the strong sense that we are an educational environment, we know the police is law enforcement, but we also do believe that they contribute and support us in running a safe educational environment for our children, for our families, and the community around us.
I might add one thing. I do appreciate the principals that I've heard from just from our meetings have really taken an approach where the family communication is first and foremost and that we would never act upon a child or among a child, next to them, without consulting that family. And I think that's very key, that we keep that relationship, especially with police or whatever else is involved, that we have to be communicative. And I really like that they consider the child first is what I keep hearing. So that makes me very, feel better as a parent, too, so.
I mean, I do have to say, I appreciate the changes in cap and section in Section 3. I appreciate those changes. And I also appreciate the changes that were made at the beginning in Section 2, sort of saying, changing it from suspected to basically suspected based on verifiable information. However, I do have still concerns with this agreement. I think that, while I know the school, I know it's like, it might be considered best practices, I don't understand really what the district's gaining out of this, what the community's gaining. I mean, we're sharing a lot of information because we're required to share suspected information, granted it needs to be verifiable, but we're still required to share information. And sort of like the catch-all is at the bottom, it says like any state thorough crime occurring on, like in the district property. I mean, where does that sort of go? I mean, is that DACA? Do we know if like somebody shows up? If we know somebody's having a party and we know there's going to be alcohol there, are we here that suspect that there's going to be alcohol there? Are we responsible to like reach out to the police? I mean, that's a concern that I have. I mean, also the concern is that too, the police and the school district, for the police to actually go like sort of prosecute or go after somebody, they have to like have sort of, there's a lot, they have to have justifiable cause. Here, if a lot of these things can be, we don't have that same measure. And so by them sort of, us sharing that, it blurs those lines. And I just feel that while, I mean, I understand a lot of districts are doing this, this is something that's going on, I just don't see the benefit of it. I mean, the school district and the police department, we should be collaborative. We shouldn't have to have an agreement to this. We should keep our information to ourselves. I mean, we shouldn't have to be becoming an extension of the police department. And I feel that's what this agreement is doing.
I mean, those are valid points. I'm curious though, Martha, do you think there's, would you, you think in practice there'd be any information that you'd be sharing as a consequence of this agreement that you would not otherwise be legally compelled to share? I mean, is there, what would be the difference in practice in your view on the points that Dave is raising?
So the law says that you're going to, any assault and weapons or drugs on school grounds are really a time when you need to engage law enforcement. What I do know is we have had some informal communication opportunities, and I know the question is, well, we did that and we didn't have the agreement. But I think this promotes in the affirmative, this agreement, this idea that we want that to continue. It is something that the police department is also very interested in having. I think it's somewhat viewed as kind of a protective mechanism. We have this agreement, we need to talk about, we, so that, like, one of the things they mentioned is sharing information about abuse, neglect, lockout, or runaways when a call may be made to DCFS. So that's, again, that's not law enforcement. That really speaks to the kinds of situations that sometimes our children and families find themselves in. And I know, again, we've had some of those informal conversations and they've been very, very helpful to us. Do I think those would continue? I have a little bit of a worry that because the agreement was pending, that maybe those communications were easy enough or natural enough and that I would not want our decision to not have an agreement to now stymie that or limit that communication. And I do have a concern about that.
And I guess my thing is then that they're not doing their job or we would be doing our job to do that. I mean, that's, I would expect us to do that in a situation like that. But the police aren't going to be doing their, I mean, that's their job then to act on it and to have these conversations. I mean, we work for the same people essentially. And so I would hope that they would honor, I mean, that you would still have those informal discussions. I mean, I don't think we need to be bound by, I mean, the nice thing is, is there's no teeth to this agreement. It's just an agreement.
That's right. It says no one will be bound and you have to comply with the law. I mean, I think that's the point. It's about trust, but it's about us providing boundaries for them, I think, which is equally important as them giving us specifications on what kind of communication they want. But I think it gives us an opportunity to share with them what we need.
And I...
And to write it down and to agree to it, I think, is important because not having the agreement, I think, leads to those vague crossovers of reach.
Right. And I guess the thing is, we have to report suspected information. They have, they have a very small, it's very narrowly defined in what they share with us. And so I think it's very one-sided towards them. And I don't, and like I said, again, I don't see what we're getting out of this. And not that we should be going, like, looking at that, but we're working for the students here, and I don't see how this is going to benefit the students or the school in this.
You know, not to talk about sensitive information, and I won't, but, so I know of occurrences where students have had disciplinary infections on the weekends, not on school grounds. We don't have to discipline children, and we wouldn't make it harder for them by knowing it. But sometimes it helps us to be watchful or to help us be very supportive if we know of something that happened to a child over the weekend, even if it's like quote unquote "got themselves in trouble." We're not asked to further that discipline. It's more of a perhaps additional support, additional counseling, additional checking in from even a classroom teacher or social worker. So we have, as we've talked about, and I'm so appreciative of this board agreeing to these kinds of things, we have tremendous social emotional supports for our students and then ultimately therefore for our families, too. And I think sometimes it's just knowing that a situation, again, we're not being asked to, we're not being asked to enforce the law, we're not being asked to increase discipline. We're just, sometimes it's just valuable to know. And I just, I know of a couple of those instances and I think it matters and I think it helps us in our educational endeavors with our students.
Well, it's very happy to see that we have very clear rules about interviewing students when we suspect they've done something wrong and that their parents be present before we bring in the police. I think Framsick sent out that, they sent out these updates, and there was that, one of them last month about that tragedy out in Naperville where the police and the school administrator interviewed a boy that was, they suspected of doing something and basically scared him so badly he committed suicide. Parents were not called, were not brought in. In many ways, the functions of, you know, the school and the police are very different and they don't always mix well. Not to say because of bad intentions, but because of different protocols and how you handle things and so forth. So I think it's very important that we always be conscious, or the school administrators be very conscious of that when they're dealing with children, that, you know, you bring in the police lightly without the parents being involved and so forth. So I'm, you know, happy to see there are strong rules about that in our policy. So any other comments about this particular agreement, having noted Dave's concerns? Are there any other?
I had a question about the indemnification section. I guess I... I guess I, well, I wonder why it's there, but if we go back to when we say this agreement has no teeth, I guess that, that seems a pretty broad clause, I guess. Particular, I think, would be more, more likely to be invoked by the police than for our folks on police grounds. I'm wondering if that's something that's standard for these agreements or where that part came from?
I think this agreement is quite standardized. And certainly, the village attorney has looked at this, as has our school district attorney, multiple times, so.
Actually, I did a Google search. I'm like sort of key phrases, and it's very, this is pretty standard.
Yeah.
I mean, we're, yeah.
Any further comments or questions about this? And if not, Margie, please hold the floor.
Ms. Kleiber?
Hi.
Mr. Regan?
Hi.
Mr. Marhol?
Hi.
Mr. Berzadi?
Nay.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thanks, Margie. Next item is the next steps in the architectural projects. This, this is not an action item.
Right. This is just really informational, just sort of that assurance that we are keeping this process moving forward. I know last month the board had looked at establishing kind of that sense of low, medium, high priorities, that we did the community survey, we shared that just a little bit earlier this evening, have slated Monday, October 16th at 6:30 as a facilities, community engagement evening, and then looking at a later in October, meeting with the facilities advisory committee. So just, I would like to, that would be my goal, is to kind of keep you all updated along the way, obviously, not just the content, but kind of our, our process steps, so. Wanted to have that.
Any, any questions about the process? If not, then we move on to new business. First item is district goals. These are the tentative district goals for 2017, 2018, so.
I think we're good. So actually, I just wanted them to be up on the screen. Also, the board has them in the board book attachment. The board had looked at these at our retreat night, and they are all linked very much with the strategic plan as our guide around these important goals. It's also something, you see their source, District Leadership Team Retreat. So the district leadership team this summer at a full day retreat spent a lot of time really thinking about important next steps in the work. And so this is an important, for district leadership, this idea of that systems alignment, that we really want these to be the shared goals at all levels. We talked about boardroom to classroom, and so want to take just a few minutes and share, share all of this. This again isn't new information for the board or not brand new information. Under curriculum and instruction, really that first goal speaks around the important work of continuing to do the work that we've been working on, that that is really what teachers have asked for. So teachers have talked a lot about, there's a lot new happening, just talked about in our budget conversation, new English language arts curriculum, new math curriculum just a year ago and two years ago at the middle school. And we know that to really use those tools well, to use those tools in a very differentiated and supported way, takes time, takes professional development and learning, takes us, takes time to look at the assessments and what the information we're getting from children about what's working best. So that first goal that reads is kind of long and wordy, I think really says that our middle school teachers have implemented. We purchased new science materials, NGSS is next generation science standards. Again, those are materials that were approved by the board just last year. Elementary teachers, we have sort of, kind of intentionally kept a little bit of a, we feel that our FOS materials, the science curriculum that's already in place is good. We know that we want to grow it and, and change it in regard to next generation science standards, but we also know that there's kind of a fragile balance of how much change all at one time. And so again, this goal was very carefully worded, that the idea of elementary teachers will become familiar with the next generation science standards and dimensions by looking at the standards, communicating with a subgroup, a committee of teachers that really have been kind of the forefront leaders on this. And again, making sure that we are not forgetting about this, we're not leaving it off the tracks, but we're moving a little bit more slowly in this process. We know we want to look at standards aligned reporting, so that speaks to the report card and the idea that as we move toward common core and the standards of the common core, that the way we report information then back to families about children's progress, there starts to be not as clear of a match between the current report card and the kinds of work that's going on in the classroom. So over time, we'd like to begin to sort of develop a process around that. And again, probably it would be a committee of teachers, but also bringing in parents and other administrators to look at, to look at the best ways to do that. The foreign language goal, that is, that sits directly in the strategic plan. We know it's a goal that's kind of had, I believe, sort of some starts and stops perhaps in, in our most recent history. So really wanting to look at strengths and weaknesses of possible instructional models around foreign language. And this again is maybe as much about sort of beefing up, for lack of a better word, the middle school, but also really looking at that K5, K6 delivery option. And so that's something that we need to do a little bit more understanding around needs assessment, surveys, looking at what's going on in other districts. And I'd shared with all of you that the superintendent's intern that's working with me and working with Merrill in many ways also, is willing to do some research and really look at other districts as well as the best practices and come back to us with, with essentially a white paper on the topic. So really want to, I think there was a real interest I felt from the board and from the community to, again, continue to keep this within our goals. It's in the strategic planning goal to sort of dig in deeper as we move forward here in the 17, 18 school year. Culture and climate, you just heard a little bit, actually you didn't hear, you saw, you participated in some work with Ron Barbacheck and his students at Hollywood. So positive behavioral student supports has been an important part that certainly I inherited. It was well kind of on its way as I came here last year, and there is a committee that is really very dedicated to not just this idea of PBSS, which I sort of talk about as the catch the kids being good and being really proactive and sharing expectations. So rather than being frustrated when kids don't meet your expectations, being really clear with them upfront around what our expectations are. So continuing that work, continuing that work with that committee that's led by Kesmir Gorman and Todd Geirman, and it strikes me as just a very engaged and involved committee, and that's been wonderful. We're talking about the initial professional development with responsive classrooms. So as Kim Hefner already shared, we sent one teacher per building to a summer training this summer already. Our administrative team read a book study on the power of our words. And again, to really look at the staff, professional development and training opportunities. So as Kim Hefner already shared, even at Hollywood, there's just been a lot of teacher-to-teacher information and adopting some of those ideas because of the professional development of just, you know, two key teachers over there right now being able to do a lot of peer-to-peer, peer-to-peer training and sharing. So we also want to look at internet safety and safe use of social media. Hauser specifically is looking again at kind of their advisor, their Cougar Connections and the social emotional learning opportunities within that, but also the idea of kids having some perhaps less structured time and having plenty of time to have positive peer interactions. A new, I won't really call it a social studies curriculum, but Facing History in Ourselves implementation is a really, run some units of study in social studies, but it also really speaks a lot to culture and climate and that sense of identity and navigating relationships, which we know is really important in those middle school years. Continue to work with Kerry Goldman and other resources on anti-bullying. We already did some of that, as you already heard, at our professional development in August. And just continue to look at these ideas of social justice, restorative justice, very much focused on the Hauser climate and culture. And then also, we have had some parents come forward that are really interested in how to make that parent-school connection even richer, and we're going to have parents join our parent leadership team at our Monday meeting. Lynn and I met about this just recently, and really look at how to best make those connections and our communications as, as clear and meaningful as, as possible. Communication being sort of an always goal, but continue to build structures that promote parent and community engagement. Looking, we're actually going to be launching a new website, just has kind of a fresher look. It is also going to meet ADA requirements and some important pieces there. Don Tofano and Merrill, last year, this is a continued goal, really is looking at a learning management system for our, our staff and ultimately for our students. We also know our principals are working directly with teachers around if the district and the principals are all looking at enhancing communication, is how do we continue to enhance the classroom level, classroom to parent communication also? I feel like I'm going fast here, I should ask if there's any sort of comments or interjection that everybody wants to share. And then in the area of finances, I worded this as balancing student needs, I shouldn't say I worded it, our district leadership team worded this as balancing student needs with solid fiscal planning. And I think that really speaks to, I think, some of the comments that you already shared in the budget conversation tonight is absolutely being fiscally responsible, but doing that in the best interest of students, being, doing that in a way that's consistent with the goals of our strategic plan. And I, again, I think the budget conversation spoke so well to that, that there are things that we are wanting to do around infrastructure for things that students need, things that our teachers need to teach our students well, but to do that in the most fiscally responsible way that we possibly can. And we know that looking at our FTE allocations, we've been taking a close look at that. Looking at, as we think about moving forward with foreign language, looking at possible changes in Quest and Advanced Learning, that we know that these have a potential personnel impact. I think the conversation yesterday, Sharon, even in the Advanced Learning Committee, was very much about how can we even consider this in the most cost neutral way possible? And looking at some innovative programming ideas that may not cost more, they might cost a little more. I can't, I shouldn't say it will or it won't, yeah. But you know, but I think there was a full understanding of this isn't a pie in the sky, let's just, you know, hire a whole lot more people to do this work. And I don't think that's what's needed either. So we also know, and then, you know, again, spoke to this just a few minutes ago, is considering our costs related to improvements with the facilities. So playgrounds and outdoor learning is one that I think continues to come up through the survey and through the prioritization that the board did just last month. And again, there's some ideas around there that are somewhat wishless from our schools, but to consider all of that, as we know, we have to consider that, figure out what it would cost, and see how it all fits within board priorities, facility advisory committee work, community survey. You know, we are, we are now at a point where we have a lot of input. And the other idea that's come up is this idea of co-teaching, and I want to be careful when I share that one because it looks like we want to add two teachers to every classroom. It's really potentially this idea of potentially kind of a reallocation of our teacher resources, and how do we really look at that as a, it's really looked at kind of a high-impact teaching practice around supporting children with special needs. It's also been looked at as a way to support children with EL needs or gifted needs, too. So this idea, perhaps to be better worded as this, I use the term, this flexible application of our resources, our resources being high-quality professionals that do this important work with, with our students. So again, that all falls under finance, and again, there, those are, those goals are by design written broadly, as we have a lot of work to consider in this area. But again, keeping in mind best interest of students and fiscal responsibility, and I know that's my job and that's the job of the board, it's, it's all of our shared jobs, and it's perhaps the most challenging part of what we do and the, the best part of what we do, sort of, perhaps depending on the day, so. And then under facilities, it's, it's a clear launch, a successful master facilities plan. I did keep here include consideration of full-day kindergarten. It was identified as a lower priority last month by the board. There is some information about it in the community survey. So I think it's something that even though we gave it a low priority, we, I felt like we didn't take it off the table. So keeping it there, again, these goals were written this summer, and we will continue to get more input about that. But again, that goal sits there right now under the facilities goal, is that what would the facilities plan be to address that? And I know part of that would be a full, much fuller and more robust consideration also about the instructional, academic and achievement needs in that area. So the other idea is this idea of promoting more flexible learning spaces. And again, that's been spoken to also around this idea of we, we move some things around, we kind of have fewer options, this idea of larger group spaces for children who might be doing more project-based ideas. Right now, we have in several of our schools, children eating in the gymnasium and also doing their PE activities, and, you know, so there's that idea that if we want to do something different on a different day, that, that kind of multipurpose cafeteria, project-based steam lab, you know, again, a lot of different ideas and names fall under that, but this idea of flexibility around our learning spaces. Last, human relations is just continuing to examine accountability measures for our staff. We really look for and hope for a successful contract negotiation by the end of this school year. We are continuing our work with the Danielson Framework, which is really the teacher evaluation, teacher appraisal framework that looks at what makes an effective educator, and using common assessments to look at student growth as part of that. And again, just trying to build consistency between our schools, and we see that there are some ways around that that are really also kind of on that management level of crisis planning, administrative procedures, personnel practices. And we'd also written here, we have a really robust mentoring and induction program, and Merrill's done an excellent job of that. We have looked at, also perhaps looking at a teacher leadership role. That must have been really on our minds at that point in July when we wrote some of these, but looking at teacher leadership as a way to build teacher capacity. And that in a small district, a lot of times there are teachers that have interest in doing something more, not necessarily leaving the classroom, but in addition to the classroom, whether they have aspirations to be an administrator or just really have a lot of that leadership skill, and how do we kind of support that? And one way we looked at is not for Merrill to stop doing mentoring and induction, but for Merrill to potentially have a teacher partner at the lead with her. So that is, in a really quick way, potentially our goals for the 17, 18 school year. And again, wanted to bring that back to the board and back to everybody for discussion and consideration. And ultimately, we, you know, it's not an action item for tonight, but we'd want to kind of, you know, approve, confirm, affirm those and publicly share them.
Thanks, Martha. Are there any comments or questions about the, these tentative goals?
Just to note, Martha, you called attention to it, but Cougar Connections seems like it's got some real possibilities. I've heard from at least one child that there's the variety of things that we're offering as well as the, the free time, but just, there's enough items offered and that time is being used well, beneficially.
Glad to hear that from your, your sample.
Well, as well as from what I heard from the teachers themselves at the open house.
I think these goals are very good, and I think they adhere to the spirit of the strategic plan, but with one qualification, and that is finance. And this is something that, that when we were doing the strategic plan, I was on the finance, the finance focus group, and we thought very hard about when we were coming up the proposals, about exactly the precise wording, what it is, Don Tofano was there, too, of what we wanted to say exactly. And the, the top goal in the finance committee was to maintain this fiscal strength of the district. We thought about different variants of that, which is like, oh, we don't, we want the budget to always be balanced, we don't want a deficit spend, or want to keep the, the reserves at a certain level. I mean, we went through, we didn't like any of those very specific, you know, very, very sort of limiting formulations because they are limiting. There are always going to be circumstances you can't perceive, and you don't want to like lock yourself in. But we did sort of feel strongly that, that keeping the district in a solid fiscal position was a, was a sort of a good inherent goal in itself. And the reason for that was that it gives you flexibility. All the stuff we've done, all the stuff we've talked about, the $3 million that we're talking about, the difference in the budget between a couple of years ago and today, was made possible because we actually are in a good fiscal position. If we weren't in a good fiscal position, we wouldn't have been doing any of that stuff. And so it's a goal in itself. And so this may sound nitpicky, but I think, I do have some questions about the metaphor that's used here. It says balanced student needs with solid fiscal planning. And that metaphor, it sounds like you have a, you're, you're weighing one against the other, that there are somehow, student needs and fiscal responsibility are somehow at odds with each other. And I think that's the wrong way to look at it. I don't think they're at odds with you, or I think that if you think about solid fiscal planning and fiscal responsibility, if we, if we don't do that, in my view, over time you lose the trust of the community. If you're not fiscally responsible and keep the, this, the strength of the district in some sort of general sense, if you lose this trust of the, of the, of the community, if they don't think that you're running things very fiscally responsible, then you actually do need money down the road, which every school district eventually does because of the limitations of the PTEL, where we are bound by this inflation, which is very, very tight, stringent. You may not, you may not find it there. So I think that I would propose that we retain the original wording or the idea of that strategic plan, which is that we want to maintain the district in a, in a solid fiscal position. Now, what does that mean exactly? I mean, what, what does that mean? And one of the things, one of the ways I think to think about that is that, we said it's not maintained it's not maintaining a certain fund balance to a certain level, which is arbitrary, or maintaining a certain, never deficit spending, which is also arbitrary. I think what it means ultimately is that you have to keep spending in line with what the community can afford and wants to spend, in some sort of average sense. And that requires the judgment call. That's kind of a judgment call, like, what does the community actually want? You never know until you actually go to referendum. But there has to be that judgment call. It's like, are we, is our spending growth, are spending in line with what the community can afford and what they are willing to pay for? And if you misjudge that, we misjudge that, then really bad things can happen, as we've seen with, you know, other local school districts, one across the street here, which is still paying in a way for what was perhaps overspending in the 2000s. And, you know, now, you know, if you look at the spending for students, it's been going down for a decade. So the kids that are there now are getting fewer options, bigger classes, all the rest that, you know, compared to what they were in the 2000s. So we have to really be careful about that. So I do have some issues about the change, what I perceive as the change of the language in this particular implementation of the strategic plan wording around the fiscal strength of the district, in that sort of very general, broad sense.
I actually agree with that. I would prefer that the district leadership team went back to the original draft and reallocate what was written. I feel like this has been tweaked in a lot of areas, and not to say that that's not appropriate. We've seen different requirements from the state and things that we're doing for the benefit of curriculum improvement, but I also agree this has been manipulated in a different direction.
So, and maybe, maybe there's some clarity we need to bring around sort of the goal-setting idea. So, mine actually is the strategic plan set very broad goals, and then annual goals fall kind of within those goal statements. When I think about the one under finance specifically, to kind of speak to that, the strategic plan had two under finance. One was maintain the district's solid fiscal position, and the other was prioritize spending to align with and support strategic goals. And I really felt our charge in 17, 18 was to kind of work within those. So none of, none of these really kind of are exact rewords of the strategic plan. It really falls under kind of, as we are now in essentially year three.
The annual implementation of the plan.
Yeah. But I mean, I, you know, I think this is, I think that particular one around finance, you know, balancing student needs with solid fiscal position, maintaining a district's solid fiscal position, prioritizing spending to align with the district's strategic plan, to me, all of them say, right, we're going to do good work financially, you know, focused on what students need, because a solid fiscal position of the school district, right, is built around the needs of our students. So I don't know that any of them, like, to me, I don't know that we were saying something terribly different, so of course I would be fine with the language change. If it's, you know, I wasn't here for the original development of the strategic plan. I don't know the, I do know from prior experiences with strategic planning, some days absolutely the wordsmithing means a great deal to certain people, and so I'm very comfortable with that shift. But I do just want to share that this was kind of a digging in into sort of the year three of the strategic plan.
Yeah, no, this is not a criticism, and this is absolutely, you're absolutely doing the right thing. I just want to sort of, we're going to adopt these, these goals at some point when they're worded in a way that we like, and then we're going to basically, that's going to, we're going to then like come back at the end of the year and say, how do we do? With this wording, we could come back next year with a budget, another budget that's very large relative to, with a very large growth relative to our growth in revenue and growth in resources. And we could then argue, well, that's, you know, that doesn't look like, it's going to put us in a bad fiscal position, but we need it for students. And that, that is, that's an argument you can make, but it's not consistent with what I take to be the intention of the strategic plan.
I read it very differently. I read it within the context of the conversations we've been having around finance, that we are going on this trend this way, and we need to, so I look at it as like, we're really going to assess our, like, kind of say, there's a lot of things that need to be reviewed to make sure that we are spending in the right spots. So to me, it looks like it's just going to be like, we're looking at what we're spending, making sure that it is actually for student needs. Like, I don't, I don't think it sounds like, oh, we're going to, I mean, obviously you can read it either way, balance, whether we should spend money or, you know, be fiscally ready, you know.
So you think that you're taking a different reading, which I think the reading you're taking, I'm totally, that's actually what I-
Like, I'm taking a reading of like, we're going to analyze the situation.
We have these resources, and we want to allocate them out, which I think is absolutely the intention of what we should do.
I think that's the problem, is it's, the way it's worded leads to too much interpretation. So if we could just go back and refine, awesome.
And I'm absolutely happy to, so do you want it to say maintain the district's solid fiscal position? I think still it was under there, examine FTE. We know that FTE is sort of this, this big one that matters a whole lot, and where the budget grows or doesn't. We know that foreign language has sort of a potential personnel impact in the Quest Advanced Learning, because those seem like very active actions right now, the real work that we're kind of been digging into already. But if that, that sort of broader goal statement is better as maintaining the district's solid fiscal position, because it speaks to an agreement that was made in the original plan, like, I'm, I'm very comfortable with that.
I personally, I would be comfortable with that as well, but I don't feel like it's a very actionable goal for an annual goal, like, maintain it, what does that mean?
It's kind of vague, intentionally vague, I think. You're right, it's very, it's vague.
Right, but I think to, to get to that goal of maintaining our strong fiscal position, we need to do some work to make sure that our planning is getting there.
That's absolutely right.
So to me, this goal would be, let's dig down and analyze what we're spending on to make sure that we're truly spending our money in the most effective ways.
That's absolutely right. But the other side of-
I'm fine with Luda's interpretation there, but when I read that, I think it could be construed.
Yeah, no, agreed.
So I think that, you know-
Why can't we keep some of the detail, but the beginning needs to have the different fronts?
Right, and I think that's absolutely the goal, is to allocate resources optimally. If we have another couple of years, like we've had in the last couple of years, of seven and a half percent growth, six and a half percent growth, you know, we are definitely not going to be in a strong fiscal position.
Right, and that's why I think we need to analyze where that growth is coming from and what we're going to do to, to control that growth. So I would think you would want to do an analysis of that-
Totally agree.
-to maintain our strong fiscal position. Like, I just feel like, since it's an annual goal, I want something that actually you can report on.
I'm fine with all of these different items, although I would add, add perhaps, these are a bunch of things that might cost more money, foreign language instruction, that we talked about Quest, we talked about improvements to playgrounds, we talked about all of these lab spaces and so on. So all these things are sort of like things we can spend more money on. I would like to be some analysis of what exactly we're talking about, which is where can we spend less money, and not, and not have any detrimental effect on-
I don't know if I would necessarily say where can we spend less money, but let's analyze where we're spending in both ways.
So we can do some of these other things.
No.
So that we-
So how about both? How about, these are some, some things we'd like to pursue, flex space, whatever kind of rooms, but here are some areas that we could cut, not cut, but refine.
Oh yeah, cut.
Whatever.
I think the word consider says we're going to look at it, but the consideration could be, it's not worth it.
Right, that's right.
For sure.
I think consider and examine are intentionally the words selected.
Analytical.
And I necessarily don't think we need to give the impression that we are going to look at foreign language, and in order to do it, we're going to cut something else, even if that something else is necessary. Like, sometimes if you get down to it and there's nothing to cut, you're not, you know, I don't want to just be looking for things to cut.
I'm not making any sort of statement about what we should, sort of, what new programs we should add, or old programs we should cut. All I'm saying is that, just the math is that if we only add and don't take away, then we're going to have very large budget increases, and that is not sustainable, and that's, that's a problem.
No, agreed, and that's why I think a deep analysis needs to be looked at, into what are we spending our money on, and are there ways to change that?
Totally agree.
So I think we're saying the same thing.
Fiscal responsibility has to be an active endeavor.
Exactly, exactly, agreed.
I mean, so it's not, you spent it last year, spend it again this year.
Exactly.
It's, are we spending money the right way?
That's right.
And is that having an impact? Is that affecting?
Absolutely.
And I think that that's an important initiative for this board to support.
I agree. And, you know, coming back to something you said earlier, Rich, you talked about sellers' zero-based budgeting, which I really liked, the idea of that, but in fact, we didn't adhere to that. We blew it 10%. It's like, it wasn't the zero, the zero-based would have given us a 0% increase if you do, if you follow seller's methodology.
That's right.
Which is, you take the last three years, you increase it by inflation and student enrollment growth, and then, well, we, so you did the calculation, but the end result was like, okay, we did, it's not zero, but 10, honestly.
Right.
So I think it is a process.
Although I will mention, the state did not help that, and some of them are good things. We need ELL teachers, because we have a certain population, we need support staff. So it's not, it's not all, it's not that we dropped the ball, it's that we did what we were supposed to do, which is a good, healthy thing to do, but we do need, I agree with Rich, look at those allocations and say, do we need to spend the same amount as last year?
We were also working through transition with a part-time finance officer.
That's right.
Now we got a full-time one who's ready to dig in.
He's ready.
Right, Rob?
Yeah, and adding on that, we're finally at a point in our administrative situation, like, we're at a point where we're not putting out fires that are, you know, like, we're here and we're ready to dig into it.
Exactly.
Not fires. Sorry. Not putting out fires, just doing other things. Hiring a superintendent.
Any other comments or questions from Martha about the, about the goals, or the precise wording, or anything of that nature?
So reword the one under finance. And I mean, I can integrate this strategic plan language.
Well, how about, could we take a look at all of them, just to, not just finance, but just to peek back and say, yeah, what do we?
In terms of language?
Yeah, exactly.
Tonight, you want to do that, you mean?
No, I mean, no, thank you. Just the leadership team and yourself.
I, oh, you know, and we, we did, we wrote these on poster paper, sort of live, and, you know, Margie and I have looked at them and done some editing, even as I look at them tonight, I realize like, there's one that just says, committee recommendations, right? So it's, you know, it's really examine committee recommendations, or, you know, so these need a little more tweaking. I would, I mean, if people are comfortable, I'm not asking, nobody's required, but if people want to take a, you know, a red line version of a word, or a, or a piece of paper, I, you know, I appreciate the collaborative process, but I also don't want anybody to feel like that's their job or requirement. But if people have strong feelings, because people do have strong feelings about language, I know that. And I want this to represent the right, the right tone, the right language, and a sense, yes, of action and measurability too.
Can I, can I ask about the last line under Hauser? Consider other opportunities related to social justice, peace, or, I think you said, restorative justice as well. What exactly are we saying on that?
So, so actually, part of our August professional development, so I name Facing History in Ourselves is one particular, and I know Merrill has shared more detail about that. The Carrie Goldman anti-bullying really spoke to doing circles around, so this idea of circles, that you, it's actually not unlike the morning meeting, that you learn to function as a community and respect each other and use respectful tone and language. So that's kind of a catch-all for this idea that other ideas might come up, right? So we know, we've worked with Carrie Goldman on anti-bullying, we've really embraced some of the ideas and the practices and some professional development specifically around Facing History. But I think this one is like, what other things might come, I think this one says to us, let's think about other things that might come up. We're not done yet. I feel like we're, we took a really, some really nice, big steps in this direction. So I don't have that as a, Merrill, and I don't know if you're, you're, like, I don't know that we're saying right now, like, and we want to do this, this, and this, but I think sometimes this, this, and this. I think of just last year, we talked about bringing in Sarah Zinn, we talked about bringing in Carrie Goldman last year, when we started to realize that we had some questions, concerns, and problems, we then found resources that helped us address this. So, you know, maybe, again, the language is, consider other opportunities related to improving the climate and culture at Hauser, because this one falls specifically under that Hauser line.
Right, right.
But if, I don't, like, I don't, like, that's not a, let's on-
It sounds, I think, what you're saying, Dan, it sounds a little bit like agenda-like versus action-like, with the verbiage that's apparent to a moment.
Well, and then also being open-ended, I guess, is, it leaves a question.
Like, because it's other, like, that way?
Right, right, I guess other than not defined.
I think it's more expanding opportunities around those initiatives that we talked about, to be more specific to what is actually happening, like Cougar Connections is a good example, and building in the social, emotional, learning pieces within those opportunities to connect.
Okay.
Are you comfortable with that language? I mean, we could tighten it up, or we could sort of broaden that round some-
I think the way, the way it's described, I think the last line Merrill said, I think, would sum it up better for me. I think it's more descriptive, more identificat, it identifies a lot better to me when, the way that Merrill just described it.
To add an anecdote about the bullying of a mother of an eighth-grade girl, I think last, eighth grade last year, told my wife about, her daughter visited a school in Brookfield, and she said that there was all kinds of bullying going on. And she came back and told her mother, she said, Mom, there's nothing like that at Hauser, there's nothing like that. So from what I gather, just secondhand from talking to some of the students, I think that climate is actually quite good at Hauser, and at least relative to some of the other schools and areas.
But I think there's a real dedication to it. I think our teachers are really, you know, Joel, your comment about Cougar Connections, to, you know, the anti-bullying, the online reporting that was developed two years ago, three years ago, the professional development opportunities, just the conversations staff are having with each other just around, again, that idea of, you know, just being very respectful and looking at the kinds of discipline, what and why, and how do we really help kids make good choices? Particularly at a time in their life when they're not necessarily really good at that, you know, they really need that adult guidance. And I think maybe they don't, you know, so it's a careful balance in middle schools, as you all know. I'm absolutely serious about some, some group editing, if people want, if people have some feelings where they feel strong about language.
I'm more concerned about the idea rather than the language, but just along with the idea, right? So-
Mary Trina Turner, he'd be like, the language is really important.
So any other comments or questions about this topic? Then if not, the next item on the agenda is the Light Park Route. We are revisiting this, this project that we deferred last year. The, basically, we have a memo from the architect for a memorandum of understanding, and I think what we're talking about tonight is, correct me if I'm wrong, Rob, the memo of understanding, if we want to accept that memo, or at least enter negotiations, you know, with the architect to accept that, and then, you know, come back and vote on it later, is that, is that, is that current?
Can you come to the microphone?
Yep.
Come on up.
Thank you.
The MOU has language, they would have already finished the project, so, so we want to get new language about the process of the project, starting what they would do, and then, of course, look at the fees also.
I have two, or one question about that, maybe, Rich, you've got experience with commercial real estate, I think-
I've got some thoughts too, but-
Around the architect's fee, and that is, I think they're proposing 8.2%. On a project like this, I think that when we looked at it last year, I don't know if the cost is going to change or not, but we looked at between 600 and 800,000, let's say 700,000. If you put 8% fee, that's $56,000 for the architect. Even at an hourly rate of $200 an hour, that's a lot of hours, so I'm just wondering, like, are these based on your experience?
How many hours does that come out to, do you know?
Well, a lot, I mean, I can't, it's out of my head, but-
I'm asking.
It's 280 or something like that, I mean, is it, yeah, so that's, you know.
To start, I guess I-
Rich, do you want to jump in first, or?
You know, this goes back to the base agreement that we have with them. I mean, if I would be doing this project as a standalone, those are, design fees would be fixed, and fixed not to exceed.
Yes.
Because it's a, it's a known quantity, right?
Yep.
Wouldn't you say the same thing, Joel?
That's actually exactly where I was going to go. This definitely needs a not-to-exceed fee. The other thing is, the schedule, the timeline notes designed to start as soon as possible. I'm, I'd like to hear from the architect how much design she really believes is necessary versus, here's areas that the contractor can be given instruction on how to fix.
She's going to be creating a scope of work.
Exactly.
Less about design, more about do this, do that.
And so that has me, it's a little too vague. I'd rather see an anticipated scope that she generates first, and the fee, it needs a not-to-exceed, but I, again, she should be laying out a scope of work to justify the fee.
And I don't think we're suggesting that Carrie needs to come back in and talk to us about this.
No.
No, this can be all paper-based.
Do you want to come to the microphone, Rob, and use just the questions for you or?
Comfortable if her, Rob, come in and stop going back there. So I think we're just really asking you to negotiate these points on our behalf, and you know, that hopefully what you send back to us will represent.
Right. And I looked at some of the contract language at the end of it, and it sort of said that we can't divulge what their fees are. And that probably shouldn't be on there.
Rob, that just needs to go away.
Right, so.
There's, sorry, to Rob's point, at the very end of the memorandum, there's a whole, basically, we can't release any information, yet this is in our publicly available board packet, so.
They're saying unless it's FOIA, you, you can't release it. Or it's under a lawsuit or something where you have to, but yes, I don't think that's really necessary.
So basically, it's something, we have an agreement then to basically, that Rob's going to go back and negotiate this fee and try to get, basically.
Refine the scope more. What Carrie needs to refine, DLA's anticipated scope of both the work, as well as what she intends to put into this timewise, and justify her, justify the percentage fee, or she could go to a not to exceed.
I would actually, I mean, I don't have as much experience as you guys with this, but I don't feel comfortable doing a percentage.
That's not.
I would say we, we would give her the percentage and do a fixed fee, not to exceed. I mean, that's generally how we do a lot of contracts.
The structure of what's been proposed really suggests there's, there's a high degree of design attached to this.
Well, this is a historic property, there can't be that much change to the roof.
We're replacing existing.
Replacing existing roof, there might be slight modifications, but it shouldn't require a lot of.
It shouldn't be a 180, right.
I think there's some thought on this because of, you know, if it's landmark status, make sure that you're within the guidelines of landmark status. But I do agree that it should be, it could be a fee percentage, but not to exceed. That way, otherwise, I mean, you could do time and material, but then not to exceed, or you could do a fee not to exceed.
Either one is probably okay.
So we have an agreement on that?
I had a question though about the one line that mentions, talks about the parts of the roof with a 20-year life expectancy. It's saying there should be four years remaining, however, there are sections of the roof that lack any slope, and the drains have low, and I honestly don't know what that means, low clust, clusture.
Clarestory windows, those are windows that are high up.
Okay. Well, I guess, is it saying though, that although it should have four years, it's essentially going before its time?
I think it's merely saying that the lifespan could be, we could anticipate more lifespan out of these specific pieces of roof, but I think to Carrie's point, she's probably going to say, it's worth it just to remove and replace it right now. You get some benefit to just, I can't think the right word.